We've talked about in the Transportation Committee. Eventually, that open area is going to be covered. Which means that you're going to be shifting vibration closer to the retaining walls. Now you have a 10 or a 12-foot span before you get to the retaining wall. So you're not getting that shift of earth going that way. So by possibly spending a few dollars more at this time to see what that foundation is, it may mean that we have a change in the way that the retaining wall is built. So I don't want us to be short-sighted on a few dollars now that will mean multiple of millions of dollars later. That's my comment, and I want to thank you all for speaking into the microphones. My best meeting in years.
Mike, do you want to comment on that?
As part of the work, then, under Task 1.1, the data collection, that's really going to be the primary part, is to do a structural assessment. And, you know, one of the reasons why the team of BIC Scardozza and BKF were selected, because what we're getting here is BIC Scardozza, they're primarily, they do a lot of, they're structural engineers. They do a lot of bridges, they do a lot of structures. And BKF, as you know, they've done a lot of work here in town, you know, on hydrology and hydraulics, they're very familiar with not only the town of Atherton, but also, you know, downward into the Bay and what some of the issues are there. So, you know, that's one of the reasons, the primary reason, why this clearly was the number-one ranked team. And we feel that, you know, they definitely have the technical capabilities and all these issues will be thoroughly studied.
Thanks, Mike. Any other public comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Any further council comments?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the selection of BIC Scardozza for the Marsh Road Retaining Wall. And authorize the city manager to execute the consultant services agreement amount not to exceed $678,102.
And adopt the resolution.
And adopt the resolution.
And adopt the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll move on and talk about the MCV contract.
No, let's go back.
Oh, okay, sorry. Are you ready? Okay, sorry.
Just go right back to voting on that.
Yeah, did you announce that we, so the Arts Committee has got it? I don't think you announced it. I know it was in your write-off. You weren't making my list.
Mr. Mayor, the city clerk, city clerk slash city manager pointed out, there was no resolution. I was looking at the wrong title. The council member, Bobby, is originally motioned to have us correct.
We don't have to take another vote, do we?
Nope, it was correct.
Jim normally knows what he's doing. He may get hot occasionally.
Normally.
We're back to voting on committee members for the finance, audit finance.
So the highest number is?
You want to rank them one and two. If you're voting for two people, you want to rank them one and two. The person that you rank one is going to get two points, the person that you rank two is going to get one point.
So number one is top.
Yes.
So we need to, just to make sure, I know, we're doing the finance, we rate two people, right?
Yes. Yes, you want to rate them in order of?
You rate two people.
Yes.
Highest rate is one, second rate?
Your first choice, your first choice is one, and your second choice is two.
Make sure you put your names on if you didn't.
Mine is on the outside.
Mine doesn't have a name.
They become part of a public reference.
I think we have all, Jerry, there's coming, one more? One more is coming, I was late.
Oh, Jerry did both of those.
Yep.
No, well.
Oh, we have the other one, that's okay. Jerry can do that, that's okay.
Did you want to explain about the planning commission and the asterisks?
We only need to vote for one here.
Yeah, just give me this one. Okay, so for the Finance Committee, you're appointing Bob Palito and Diane Sandu.
So Bob is here, Diane is not, right?
Right. I'll notify Diane.
And the next meeting is in three weeks, I think.
Yes, October, Tuesday, October 9.
This is for the Planning Commission. This is Jim's planning.
You want to move on to Planning Commission?
No, go ahead, continue to discuss.
So the next one is the Park and Recreation Commission.
We have one vacancy. The vacancy is for the Atherton Dames representative, and the Atherton Dames have recommended that we appoint Tina Eisenberg. So, if you all agree.
Do we need to vote now, or do we disagree?
Yes, the council has to appoint the representative.
I move that we appoint Tina Eisenberg.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
So we don't have a ballot for the Rail Committee?
Right.
This is the Rail Committee ballot.
High tech, we're all down.
We're short one, so I'll.
Can you share with me?
Two and a half.
No, no, you are.
I've already done.
So this one is for what, the Rail Committee?
Okay. Went on while we're counting votes. I'd like to announce, I got a letter from the president of the San Mateo County Historical Association, and they're pleased to announce this year's selection for San Mateo County History Maker Award, and it is Atherton's Willie Mays. Of course, everybody knows about Willie Mays and his incredible baseball story. He's been very active in the community in San Mateo County for quite some time. He's going to be recognized at the Hotel Sofitel in Redwood City on the 8th of November at a event that will take place between 6:00 and 9:00. And we're going to post some information on the town website, or you can go to the Historical Association and make reservations if you'd like to go and be part of that. So, first off, congratulations to Willie Mays for his appointment, and I would like to make sure everybody who can possibly go, we go. Thank you. And if anybody wants to see the block motion for same coverage in the paper, they're welcome to have a copy of it.
So for the Rail Committee, you've appointed Michael Lempras. For the Planning Commission, I have a tie between Denise Coverman and Eric Lane, so I'm going to pass these back out. Vote between just those two.
Oh, Jerry said he didn't vote.
Oh, you handed both of you.
So if you want to keep your same person, you can. You put it on the left side.
So.
What do you want to do? What do you want to?
Vote for those, rank those two candidates.
Yeah, between Denise Coverman and Eric Lane.
So what do we do here?
Vote for either Denise Coverman or Eric Lane.
Oh, I see, okay.
But we're supposed to just vote for one?
Only one. Either or.
I did, I changed the one vote. I'll show you. Are you on mic, Dallas? Are you talking to me?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
It's either or.
Oh, oh, sorry. Sorry.
You want to mark that up, please?
Sorry, that's right. I was, yeah, I was trying to hide.
And you've appointed Eric Lane to the Planning Commission. I believe that's it?
No, and Eric is here.
Congratulations.
Okay, so the next item of business is item number 17, and the 17 is the extension of the MCV contract, which I tried to go to before, but. Mike, do you want to explain?
Sure. Mayor, members of the city council, you will recall in July of 2011, through a competitive procurement process, MCE Corporation was selected to provide public works maintenance services for the town of Atherton. These services included complete maintenance and operation of the town's streets, parkgrounds and facilities, drainage, town facilities, the library, task courts, and special events support. The executed contract was for an initial term of from September 16, 2011, to June 30 of 2012, with the ability to extend for two additional one-year periods. The initial contract was for a not-to-acccede fee of $472,717. The actual cost for this initial period was $348,831. Staff has been pleased with the partnership and collaboration developed with MCE. Over the past year, Steve Toddler has worked extensively and very closely with MCE to develop and implement processes and protocols to ensure close and detailed oversight of all work performed by MCE. Steve continues to meet and partner with MCE management staff to determine the most beneficial and cost-effective ways to provide services directed by the town. Staff met with MCE to negotiate the work program and maintenance and operations budget for fiscal year 2012/13. And as part of this negotiation, staff asked for some cost reductions and also the inclusion of some performance standards. The negotiated budget and not-to-acccede fee for 2012/13 is $466,207. This budget includes staffing for park events, which is an additional service not included in the initial contract. The proposed budget contains no price increases in labor, equipment, or materials, and MCE has agreed to reduce labor rates by 1% for all work which does not require the payment of prevailing wages. In addition, performance standards, as presented on pages 2 and 3 of your council report, will be included and monitored. The help between any of the standards will result in a credit to the town of $100 per occurrence. Staff believes the negotiated not-to-acccede fee represents a fair and competitive price for services, and recommends that the city council approve. That concludes my staff presentation. Steve Toddler from MCE is here.
From MCE.
Steve Lowery.
Steve Lowery, I'm sorry. Steve Toddler's here also.
But Steve Lowery is with MCE.
Okay, do we have questions? I've got some questions. Anybody else want to go? Okay, first off, on the contract, it says on page, section 4, 7 of 30, it's got 472K as opposed to 466,207.9.
That was amended today, and it was sent out to you.
Okay, well, doing reference checks, I didn't get them.
I'm sorry.
It went out to you today because that, this contract extension was approved a few days ago, but it was determined that the number was incorrect in the letter that they sent us, so we revised it and sent it out to you today. Of course, now it says 467,000, not to exceed.
Okay, all right. Secondly, I guess this is kind of for planning purposes, but when we, you know, last year we were working very hard to implement some major changes here and took some steps and lumped some things together for whatever reason, but that we all were briefed on, but I think it might be proven that as we go into RFP for this next year and get it recompeted, that we would take the time to get the, a bid for each of the park parts individually, both the street maintenance and the park maintenance, as well as for combined, to see what synergies there might be, and make sure that we get some competition to help control the costs. I noticed that there were no SLAs for park maintenance, and to me, that would be something that I would think that we could easily identify. Was there a reason that it was all, for the most part, signs and street hall, streets and things like that?
No, this is not a new contract, it's an extension.
These, but these are things that were added to the contract, the performance standards.
The performance standards were added, as I understand, voluntarily on their part. It's not something we can negotiate because it is an extension. We could go back out with an RFP, but the original contract called for two potential extensions of a year, and as I understood it, they wanted to exercise their, the option of an extension, and of course, it's mutual, both sides have got to agree to it. So to make any revisions, obviously, the entire, the entire city council.
No, I understand that, I'm just saying, my point, my.
No, and I appreciate it, but the way it was drafted, it was drafted based on being an extension, not a novation or anything other, any other change to it.
Well, but they said here it was based on negotiations and discussion, so I would think that, my question is, why didn't we not have anything for SLAs with regards to park maintenance? I guess, was that even considered or discussed?
We did not consider anything for the park at this time, no.
Okay.
We certainly could, if you desire, meet with staff and discuss if there are any SLAs that, you know, we could each of you agree upon.
I think it would be, you know, I mean, be worthwhile, I mean, but that's, obviously, according to our council, we can't, we're not asking you to, it's not a requirement, but it'd be nice to have some key performance indicators that you would be measuring yourself for. I would just recommend, it's not, again, according to our.
The way this came about, as I was told, I didn't do the, negotiate any numbers, the way I understood it, Mike and others, there was a discussion back and forth about things that they would voluntarily put into this as, and exercise the extension as opposed to create a whole new contract that then could actually trigger a new RFP at this point. And so, because of that, we didn't, at least on my side of the staff, we didn't look at anything that would be as substantial as that. Now, if they want to do it themselves, that's fine, otherwise, we're going to have to continue this item and come, bring it back at the next meeting, and we're over the contract as it is now.
Well, the contract expired in June, earlier, so.
End of June.
And my reading of it pointed that out to the city. But, so, is that something you think you might consider, Mr. Lowery? I mean, could, was there something you could entertain a discussion on, at least to develop some performance indicators that we could use in a report to evaluate how we're doing on the contract? It's not binding.
We could certainly entertain that discussion.
That would not be binding, you know, obviously, there would be no punitive items unless they choose to put those, but it'd be good for reporting purposes for us to evaluate whether or not we would like to renew the contract and continue on, you know, in a year or another three years or five years, right?
We could certainly work almost immediately with Mike and Steve to jointly develop those standards for parks.
Okay, and then the 1%, as far as the donation, that's what we have today, is that not correct for the charitable or donated services that we'd like, for example, putting the lights up?
That's correct.
There was no change in that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that's good of you to work on performance standards when you're not obligated to do so. I think that shows some good faith.
Thank you.
I have a question. Our, thank you. Do you do the landscape maintenance at the intersections going in, feeding into El Camino at the, where, at the sightlines, you know, because where little ivy grows out along the fences and you can't see around it to try to get into? I know that it's probably private property, but it's really infringing on the sightlines of the access to El Camino, and sometimes it's good, and then the next week it's overgrown. And then also, who is responsible for along the El Camino corridor, like the debris and the overgrowth into the, I guess, the right-of-way, the side where the bicycles can ride or the pedestrians can ride on the outside of the roads? Is that something that we do, or is that Caltrans?
Yeah. Mike, or Steve, do you want to answer that?
The town of Atherton has a maintenance agreement with Caltrans for maintaining the landscaping, both the formal landscaping in the middle of El Camino Real, as well as the rural landscaping, as they call it, along the edges, in the entire town limit of Atherton. MCE Corporation's duties are to keep that up, just like before when we had employees. And, you know, every so often, we get out there and we run our fingers through it, oftentimes there's complaints about a branch or two sticking out, and we'll run and run out and take care of it. If it's not a big deal, we are more and more, especially in the last year, using our code abatement officer to get citizens to start learning that they need, or residents to start learning that they need to start dealing with those issues on their own, because it is their landscape and state right-of-way, and they need to keep it back. But if it's a hazard, we'll take care of it. Repeat offenders, so to speak, will, you know, every year, for the last couple of years, we've been getting Bob Cushing more and more involved in changing the habits of some of the homeowners along there to keep their areas moving back. But it is part of the MCE contract to do that, should we need to.
I only bring it up because coming even out of Asheville here, there's always, you know, on the left-hand side, there's all, there's shrubbery that grows quickly, and I know you guys cut it back, it's just that if it's every week or every two weeks, it's got to be a constant problem.
It's something, and that one in particular is, we just cut back per city attorney's request.
Yeah, because I, I fussed over.
But there's one at Lloyd Park where, you know, we cut it back a little bit of time where that resident that lives there gets awfully mad at me. So I, you know, we have to play with those scenarios a lot, too, we can.
And then along.
We try to be friendly with everyone.
I know it's not a legitimate bike path, but if you look on the sides of the road, there is a white line that's painted, and there is a paved area that, you know, pedestrians or bikes try to bike in it.
It's an emergency shoulder.
Right, but a lot of times, the overgrowth is encroaching on that, and then there's all this debris and everything, and I just think, gosh, if we could just cut back that overgrowth, you know, kind of severely, it would give a little bit more area for a bike or a pedestrian to ride more safely. So that's just, if that's part of our contract, I'd like us to be.
The only question I have, Steve, and I think I've talked to you about this before, the garden behind our little library is, can be, could be, a nice garden, but I don't think that it's been maintained very well. And I know I called you recently about it, and I think some people came over on a one-time basis, but I think it'd be nice if we could try to keep that, it's a garden behind the little library.
Right here?
Yeah, like here, and people walk out of the library and it's a nice little garden, it's kind of friendly there, so I think it would be good if we could make sure that it's maintained.
We do maintain it every week, so, and I think the last time that you contacted me, they were having an event there and they wanted to do some extra yanking out of some ivy or something along those lines. You talking about like six months ago?
Yeah.
When we went out. We do every week, we trim the edges, we blow the debris off the hardscapes and.
I mean, you know, there's several things I noticed, and some of the plants were dying because they weren't getting any water and, you know, I'm just saying, it's not much work. If we could make sure the plants are getting watered, for instance, or put in a sprinkler system to make sure they get water, I think that would be helpful.
We used to have several volunteers in the park who did the gardening and the watering, but.
I know, my wife is one of them.
We'll look into that.
We'll take an extra special look at that. I, not aware of any.
Any other questions for, on the MCE contract, Jerry?
Just a quick one, what's the HVAC cost?
The heating, ventilation, and air conditioning costs?
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
HVAC.
Okay. The admin, library are combined as far as the work thing, how do you split those apart when you actually try to do the cost?
Everything that's assigned to the six different tasks, they're on the front of the staff report, where the coding numbers is, are, I believe it's under the Fiscal Impact Report, section of the staff report.
Do they have unique numbers that?
Right, so everything that is done at the library is charged to that account and then recovered from the library fund. Everything that's done in events is recovered from, you know, is recorded in our van, revenue and expenses. Same with tennis. Everything that's done in tennis is paid for separately, and that's why we've set it up like that, so it makes it really easy to bookkeeper.
What utility are we getting out of the corp yard now?
What use?
What use are we getting out of the corp yard now?
The street corp yard or the park corp?
The park corp yard.
Well, that's still the center for the park vehicles, the little driver around vehicles.
It's housing some.
And our mowers, and, yeah, we still have, MCE has one full-time employee at the park that's there 40 hours a week, and there's a part-timer that works events also, and that's where they keep their equipment, their bags, their.
Okay. The Knox preschool costs, does the town pick these up, or do they build a new school, or how does that happen?
The Knox preschool cost for anything that MCE does is picked up by the town. There are some things that Susan Knox has taken care of beyond us, such as she has her own janitorial done, that, you know, we don't take, we don't charge for, she takes care of that. Usually, if there's some little pest control issues, she's taking care of those over there, but the, the facility costs are all paid for by the town, per the agreement. When those trailers went in, she paid for them, turned them over to the town five years later, and we've taken over.
So how much rent do we get a year, preschool?
There was a lease agreement.
I don't know.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm just curious as to, doing, taking a look at the, all the profit costs the town incurs and doing a matching to revenue and expense, and just seeing what, you know, what the margin is that the town is recognizing on that. And the El Camino, $40,000 here for grounds, is all of that being picked up by the state?
I believe it's $38,000.
Okay, so it's close.
Yeah, they, they, well, actually, when I, I came here from Caltrans, when I got here, we had an $8,000 agreement, and we renegotiated that to $38,000. There's work that's done, in fact, this week, I don't know if you noticed, we removed some elm trees that had Dutch elm disease, the last couple that were left out there, and we removed those this week with the town tree crew that's hired separately off the MCE contract. And, you know, part of that $38,000 will go to pay for that, although we don't have a direct burdened.
Yeah, okay.
Can you show him that? And showing that.
The overall look at this thing is pretty good. I think that you guys have done a good job in working with the vendor on this. One last question is that, one of the niceties here is a donation by the contractor, by the vendor, to the town. Last year, they put up Christmas lights and so forth. Who decides how to use their largest, their donation? Is that something the staff sits down and says, well, why don't you do this or?
Well, that would be me, last year.
What about, would one option be to possibly have them organize a volunteer day in the park for town residents to help with the park and better shape?
I think that's totally something that they could do.
Okay, I just wanted to know if that would be possible option.
You also used some of their time for the library open house, didn't you?
Yes.
Because you mentioned to me on that day.
We used some time for the library open house. We had, they had a event over there and we had MCE staff.
Really?
Putting kids in the tractor, stuff like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any public comments on the MCE contract? Okay, seeing none. Any other comments from the council? Move approval?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, Jerry submitted a council report and wasn't it denied next month for me to submit a report?
I got mine.
Oh, you did yours, mine's not done, I'm so sorry. Mine will be done through the, leave the city.
I have more, I have more to come.
Also, Mr. Mayor, I attended that Caltrans modernization meeting and I have a report for you. I promised to give you a report.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Anybody want to ask any questions on any of the council reports? Seeing none. Why don't we move on to future agenda items? There was a colleague's letter that was prepared by Mr. Doppian and myself in response to both the telephone survey and a mailer that was put out to all Atherton residents by the Police Officers Association here. We had, just to give you the overview, we did have a meeting here and it was recommended that the council at least consider this for a potential agenda item. We believe it's important that we do something quickly. October is the earliest, we can do something quickly by this vehicle. So Jim and I would appreciate your support. My understanding is we can't comment much more on this, we just vote on it. So is there a motion to adopt this colleague's letter and have something prepared for council's position next, at the next meeting?
I could agree with the points and so move.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So it'll be in the October meeting. Any other public comments? Seeing none?
Move to Jerry.
Second, all in favor? Aye, thank you all for coming.